Good morning. If you'll join us in the flag salute, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bourbon County Commission Meeting, November 7th. Approval of consent agenda. And by the way, county councilor just reported that Commissioner Beth will not be here.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes from 10/31/2024. Approval of the accounts payable totaling $442,955.86. And then approval of payroll totaling $306,687.17.
Got a motion. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Consent agenda, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, Casey Brown, SCK Cap Transportation, please.
There is a letter of support if you choose to sign it. It is a letter of support for...
Morning.
Good morning.
How are you, sir?
We are here today to discuss the future of the BBGO general public transportation. Information required.
Thank you.
On page two, there's the information and some statistics about what's been going on from July 1 to June 30 for BBGO. We had the honor and privilege about two years ago to team up with the local health equity action team up here in HBCAT to bring this general public transportation to life across Bourbon County. We're looking towards its future today. The grant application that we apply for to be able to make this possible, that brings the 70% state federal funds at play, is sitting on our desks back home. And we're working on that. We've got a two-fold request. The first one should be very simple. It's a letter of support for the application itself that you guys want us here and want this general public service in Bourbon County. The second one's a little more difficult. You guys have previously been able to help us operate with a $3,000 local match. In total, for a three-day service, we have to have $18,000 in local match. We are looking for a contribution. The LHEAT was able to throw some in before, so that money that they were using is no longer available. Hoping you guys can match the city at $5,000, but previously you guys were able to give us three. Then it would guarantee the operations from July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026. So...
Okay.
You guys got any questions?
No, I think you have a wonderful service that you offer. Certainly, I'll make a motion to approve a support letter from Bourbon County of SCK Cap Transportation Program. Support letter, which is included.
Is what this is? Is that what you gave me? A support letter?
Yeah.
This is just a support letter for the...
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that we send a support letter.
Okay. Got a motion? Seconding further discussion on support letter. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Brandon, general discussion of donation agreement or fund. We might...
Um...
We should have...
I don't know. Do we need to ask the CFO if we have the...
We should have $70,000 in our commission discretionary fund, but it won't hurt to ask her. Make sure that hasn't been moved.
Hey, Susan? She is. You suck up on me. Do we...Commissioner discretionary fund? Do we have some money to...we could donate to the SCK Transportation?
It's there, but I'm concerned with where we're going to end up at the end of the year. So, that's just fine.
And if I understand, you guys are on a calendar fiscal year?
Mm-hmm.
So, we would not need the funding until sometime between July of '25 and June of '26.
So, it'd be better to come back next week.
We're okay if you say you're gonna support it, but we don't need the actual funding until the time...
But you'd be better to come back in July.
Yeah, you'd be better to come back closer.
Can you do that?
Well, we...Part of the reason we're asking for the letters is we have to send everything to the state.
Okay.
And the Fed to...
But you don't have to show your match.
A simple letter that says you guys will support it at a dollar amount, we can deal with the mechanics of the win at a later time.
But we have to commit to a dollar amount.
Yes.
Do you have any money to win?
I don't have to actually have cash in hand until sometime between July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of '26.
So, you would have time to figure that into your next year's budget in '26.
And if we...I was gonna say, if we need to come back and make a formal demo during budget time...
I would recommend that, yes.
We'll make that now.
Definitely come in the new commission during the budgeting time and remind them that what your needs are. We need to commit something today.
And this isn't part of the elderly...I'm sorry, I didn't hear all the conversation. It isn't part of the elderly...
No, it's the SCK Cap Transportation. And according to their ridership by town, Fort Scott uses 81% of their services. So, I mean, it's...
Fort Scott does, but not Bourbon County.
Right. Bourbon County is...
It's broke down by township.
It's broke down by township, so... So, yeah, county uses approximately 20%, 19%.
What do you want to do, Brandon?
Can it be tabled till next week so we have some time to look at it?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Can I table it till next week? And I can look at it and I can do some math?
If I need to come back and visit, that's fine.
Okay. Yep, I'm not gonna make a motion on the dollar amount donation right now.
Okay.
And we'll table it till next week and have a discussion then.
I'll come visit you next week.
I second that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Eric Bailey, please. Morning.
I'll just stand here real quick. I just got a couple of quick things. First one is FEMA was here Tuesday reviewing roads that we do not have completed. They are back again today. They'll be here any minute, and we'll be going and driving everything north of 54 Highway, the projects we don't have completed there. So, very pleased with what we've done so far. Everything is looking very good on the FEMA end.
Good.
Second thing I have, we have completed our core drilling out at Elm Creek Lake, and we will be doing a presentation to you next commission meeting. Need a little bit of time to get everything together and get the presentation around and ready.
Okay.
And I'll have someone with me. Danny Hurt will be here. He does drilling and what have you for us, or the blasting and what have you. He'll be here with us to do the presentation. And then last, I need the executive session for real estate acquisition. It's next to the bottom down there, I believe it's B6.
Okay.
And I need two commissioners, Justin Meeks and myself, for seven minutes.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion. We go into executive session. KSA 75-4319B6. It'll be the two commissioners, the county counselor and Eric Bailey. And it is for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property.
With possible action.
With possible action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry. What time? Oh, my bad. How long did you need, Eric?
Seven.
Seven minutes. So, we'll be back at nine...nine fifteen? Nine sixteen?
Hell, fine.
Seven minutes from now. Not bad, guys. Sorry. Sorry.